For community input for items not on the agenda. We also have no conflict disclosure and consideration of waivers. So we'll move to our consent agenda. Superintendent recommends approval of the following. Approval and/or correction of minutes of previous meetings. Approval and/or corrections of the financial report. Consideration and approval of the bills. We have ten new hires to our district that require board approval to be covered by a workman's compensation plan. We have one resignation for board approval. Kathy Bostrom, Director of Transportation, twelve years of service effective November twenty-sixth of two thousand and twenty-five. We have a request permission to operate the summer nutrition program. Request permission to let bids for milk and dairy products. We need to set our election date for June second of two thousand and twenty-six. And the High School Music Parents Association is requesting a custodial account in the business office. We can pass that with one motion, or if any member would like to pull any item out for further discussion, they may certainly do so.
Move approval of consent?
Second. I moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Okay, see and none, since we have Shelley here now on phone. Kelly, would you call roll, please?
Carrie.
Aye.
Cardona.
Aye.
Simmons.
Aye.
Bishop.
Aye.
Van Berkom.
Aye.
Passed unanimously.
Okay, consent agenda is adopted. Now I'll turn to Dr. Steinhoff, so he can celebrate the successes in our district.
Thank you Chairman Van Berkom. Good evening, everyone. I have four thank yous this evening, so thank you to Gary Zell for the donations of oranges to all of the students at the Washington four-five center. Thank you to Shannon Nordstrom of Nordstrom's Automotive in Garrettson for the donation of two fully functional motors to the CTE automotive classes. Thank you to the Huron Area Education Federal Credit Union for the monthly treats. And thank you to Modern Woodman for their hundred dollar donation to Madison two-three Center throughout their hometown hero program. And that concludes the celebrations this evening in the district.
Thank you very much, Dr. Steinhoff. We'll move into board reports now. Our first board report is our classified employee of the month, presented by Mrs. Peets. Our employee of the month is Danielle Radke, yeah, Administrative Assistant for the Curriculum Department.
Good evening. Danielle does so many wonderful things for our curriculum office and the Office of Instruction and Assessment. She is a smiling, welcoming face who greets everyone attending trainings at the Instructional Planning Center, as well as board meetings and other scheduled events. She ensures the room is prepared and that all amenities are in place, creating an inviting and professional environment for participants. Danielle plays a vital role in supporting the work of our district. She assists with numerous federal, state, and district level reports, completing each one with accuracy and timeliness. She helps with the complex process of ordering and reordering of curriculum each year, tracking multiple vendors, coordinating reorders in order, and overseeing the arrival and seamless distribution of all the materials. Many times in the summer Danielle can be seen hauling boxes bigger than she is throughout her entire arena. Her attention to detail ensures that teachers have what they need to provide high-quality instruction to our students. In addition, Danielle oversees our district substitute system, a responsibility that requires great organization and constant attention to detail. She manages this demanding task with efficiency and professionalism, ensuring positive attitude and her true tiger spirit. She approaches every task with dedication, kindness, and a willingness to go above and beyond to support her colleagues and our district. It is with great pleasure that I introduce Danielle Radke, our December Classified Employee of the Month.
Thank you very much Danielle. Thank you Linda. Okay, now I will turn to Gracie as she introduces our high school student report.
With me today, I have the Student Council, I have Junior Cooper Bishop, and Seniors Landon Holst and Riley Winiger.
All right, hello everybody. We are the members of the Huron High School Student Council. I am Cooper Bishop. I'm a junior representative.
I am Landon Holst. I am the Vice President.
I'm Riley Winiger. I'm a senior representative. Um, to start, we're gonna, I guess we're gonna go over pretty much everything that Student Council does and helps with out the school, and kind of things that people don't realize we do. So the first thing is gonna be homecoming. Um, we actually start during the summer and come up with the themes and have a big long meeting about that. Um, we organize a bunch of the events for the first week. We have like Beanbag Night. That was two weeks before homecoming, just kinda to get everybody, the new students. To get everybody kinda participating in events throughout the school. And then we helped with open house, we advertised homecoming, helped people find their new classrooms, and sold T-shirts for homecoming. That's a fundraiser we do to get us some money. And then, um. Should we go over all of the days?
Oh, yeah, yeah, good one.
Okay. Um, so the themes this year, we had, we had a Rory and Rivalries, so every day there was two different themes you could choose from, which made it easier for students, because in the past we've had people complain about the themes. So this year we made it two for every day, kind of like two opposites. So we had bikers versus surfers, country versus country club, Disney versus Marvel, Mathlete versus Athletes, and then our homecoming T-shirts for Friday that everybody wore. So.
And then during homecoming, we had our coronation that we were, that we organized and that we helped at. Um, we had a practice Monday morning at seven AM, and that was just to help get everybody together, just to walk down the aisles and help have people hold flags and get people where they need to go. Um, and then after that, we wrapped the, the homecoming H that is burned at halftime during the football game. And the clo, they were wrapped in clothes from the Salvation Army that we were, that we got donated. And then the coronation ceremony on Tuesday night after the volleyball game. We set up props, we tore down, we set up the, the stage and stuff, and we read the names of all the athletes during the parade of athletes. And yeah, we hope, like I said, we, we held flags. And then, yeah, we, uh, Student Council members were advised to dress up for all the dress-up themes that Riley, Riley mentioned about. And we had, on Friday, we had breakfast, Friday was a big day, I guess. And we had breakfast from seven-thirty to eight-oh-five. We had Casey's Breakfast Pizza and donuts from Cobhorns?
Yeah.
Cobhorns, yeah, we had, we had them from Cobhorns, and they were really good, students liked it. And then after that was the pep rally at eight-thirty in the auditorium. And, I mean, students participate in games. There's a lot of cheering and yelling and stuff, and, uh, yeah. The teachers get involved, we have the teachers get involved into, into the games, like, um, oh, what's one? What's, what do they do? The dress to impress.
Yeah.
So teachers dress up as, uh, just funny outfits and the kids cheer for it. And the band plays, um, and then the cheerleaders do a lot of cheers, just like you would see at a basketball game for a student section. Just stuff like that to get, get the people going, I guess. And then after that was the Battle of Classes at the arena here. And each class, like, picks out a section of the bleachers to sit at, so there's four, there's four sections to sit at, and then the homerooms like race against each other, uh, just in fun games like, like the beach towel race, one person sits on the beach towel and then the other person drags them around and go back, down and back, and it's just a fundraiser. And then we helped set up for the homecoming parade. And that's kinda all we did for homecoming. A lot of planning and a lot of brainstorming, yeah, it took a lot of time. And I'll pass over to Landon.
Um, next up is the food drive. It's in November, it's kinda towards the end of November. We, um, we have students gather non-perishable items. So, um, at the end of it, we can donate to the Salvation Army, and it's like a competition to get more people involved. We, uh, to like show who's winning in the lunchroom at high school, we put up like these, uh, like a long, long ring of, um, uh, construction paper, and it shows how much you've had and who's in the lead and whatnot. And it's, it's just a good way to get the school involved in something. It's kind of, we have nothing else to do around that time. Um, sports are just getting out, so it's just kind of like a blah kind of time. Um, the winners, um, it's each class, um, it's a separate class gets to win, wins it all. And it's, uh, root beer floats we serve. And we, we also pay for all the root beer floats and stuff, um, the donuts and pizza for homecoming and stuff. And then at the end of it, we give it to Salvation Army, and then we do it with that.
Um, next thing is the angel tree. About a week ago, um, us three, we went to Walmart and we got, so we chose one boy and one girl. We had the boys, we went there, and we had fifty dollars, so we went and chose some fun items for the kids. And then we also got them their needs and stuff for the winter. And then we took them to the Salvation Army after and did that for them.
And then our next activity is tonight, actually, um, at seven, if anyone wants to go, it's, uh, Bingo Night. It's a, it's kinda like a fundraiser for hats, mittens, and socks that we, uh, donate to the Salvation Army, too. We do donate them. Um, if you bring any of those three clothing items, you get to play free all night. If not, it's a one dollar per card. And, uh, all Student Council, every single member brings a dozen sweet treats baked. And winners get to have, pick a few of those, and then there's also trivia we do in between, like, every card. And we have, um, Dairy Queen cards this year.
Dilly bar.
Uh, dilly bar, and we also pay for those, and we just give those out for, um, the people that win the trivia.
All right, and then we, we do, uh, door decorating that corresponds with Christmas. Just the week leading up to Christmas, uh, there's different homerooms in the high school, and they decorate their, their door on the outside, so for people to see. And obviously they're Christmas themed, um, and we just organize that through the hallways, uh, just what theme to pick based off Christmas movies, like the, like Rudolph, Elf, and the Nutcracker and whatnot, and students really enjoy that. And then the, the winner of who had the best door or the best theme, uh, gets free candy canes that we pay for.
And then in January, when we come back from, um, Christmas break, we sent out, we sent out a survey, it's called Mathematics, and it's just for kids to have fun and try to like know who you match with. And, um, once we get the results back, we, we sell every, like, every individual's card for one dollar. No, it's two dollars now.
It's two dollars.
Oh, we sell for two dollars now, I'm sorry.
Um, each month we sell parking passes during homeroom. There's a spot in front of the high school for the Student of the Month, so we go around to every homeroom, and we sell chances to get that for a dollar each. Um, and then you win that, we pick a new person every single month.
Yeah, and then, so in the middle of January, when there's nothing going on, uh, there's a video game and Build a Buddy Night. So for the video game part, we, we set up both at the same time. And students can play just games against each other, like there's, people bring Wiz and PlayStations and Nintendo Switches, and they play games like Just Dance or Mario Kart and Smash Bros., and we bring treats to provide for them, and like cookies and, uh, like Kool-Aid and stuff, and, yeah. It's just a fun night for kids to get together and stuff like that. And then the Build, Build a Buddy is like a stuffed animal that people can make. You pay like five dollars. And we order the, like, the fluffy, like, shell of the animals, and the students fill, fill them with, uh, the stuffing, yeah. They fill them with the stuffing, and then they, they get a little certificate with the car, uh, yeah, a card that goes with the stuffed animal. And they name them, and they put their name on it, and they just get to keep it.
And then, um, February, this is when like school gets really like, just dread school every day. So we try to make it a lot more enjoyable. It's about the middle of February, we, um, we have a winter blast week. It's so, sort of like, uh, homecoming. Um, we have dress-up days, we have, um, a prep pep rally as well, and then we also sell donuts or cinnamon rolls and caramel rolls in the morning. Uh, we don't sell them, we give them away. So, yeah, that's that. And then in March, we do Mystery, Mystery HHS. Um, it's almost like a, a dating show. We have, um, nine, uh, boys and then nine girls. Uh, three, sorry, three girls. And then we have like a barrier, like a wall between them, and then the, all the boys, boys have a voice changer on. Um, so the girls try to pick their best match, I guess you can say. Um, there's videos with, uh, candidates. And the gift bags for contestants, uh, with a five-dollar scooters cars. Uh, what is it? Who, what's the winning, who wins?
Oh, what is the name? Mister, Mister HHS.
Yes.
Person who wins?
Yeah, and then we give him a, a goodie bag and flowers, I think. And then Mister and Misses Charity, who sells the most, um, charity.
Yeah, it's like a fundraiser.
Yes, fundraiser, there we go. And then, yeah.
Um, towards the end of March, we have State Student Council. Uh, this is my first year on Student Council, but these guys have never gotten to go there for the three or four years they've been on it. So it is on the thirtieth this year through the first of April, and it's gotten canceled every single year, so.
Yeah, hopefully we go to that this year. That might be fun if we try to go, I guess. Um, and then towards the, or at the beginning of May, we have the eighth grader tours that we put on. So basically the eighth graders just come in the morning from about nine to eleven, and they come in two big groups, and, um, yeah, they, they, we, we meet in the auditorium and they ask us questions, and like we sit on the, we just sit on the, uh, stage. We sit on the stage and we give them microphones to, for them to ask questions, and we answer, and, uh, we just give them one piece of advice. We all go on our own, give them our piece of advice. Like, for example, like, walk on the right side, right side of the hallway or something like that, like walk fast, I guess, so you don't get run over. And then two, yeah, two Student Council members lead like a group, a group of kids, and we split up and tour the whole high school, and I answer any questions that they have about high school, and that it's not so scary. And then after that, uh, is our staff appreciation lunch, and it's the same day. We provide lunch for all the teachers, and there's a, we have a first and second lunch at the high school, and whatever lunch that you're at, you go and help the teachers. I think last year we had like, uh, what do we have? We had beans and like pulled pork and potato salad, stuff like that. And then all the Student Council members bring goods or desserts for the, for the teachers to eat.
And then one of our last events of the year is our four-on-four co-ed volleyball tournament. It's, it's probably our most popular event we got going on. Um, you're gonna have the up to five players and one coach on the team.
Is it five dollars per person?
No, it's just five dollars for the team.
Okay. Um, so it's kind of a fundraiser as well. It's five dollars per, uh, per team, and we usually get a lot of participation with this, so we make a lot of money on this. And then we provide drinks, some snacks, and then we just, we, Student Council members kinda run the whole thing, kinda keep it organized. Um, there's obviously a loser's bracket, so everybody's not left out. And then, um, uh, yeah, people make their, make their outfits very interesting as much as possible. And team names.
We say have appropriate team names, but.
People ignore us.
That's about it.
Yeah.
Is that everything?
I think so.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's pretty much what we do for Student Council for the year. I mean, are there any questions?
Yeah, I do. I'm sure sounds like you guys really keep busy. I didn't realize everything that Student Council does throughout the year. How often does Student Council meet?
We have, we usually have meetings like once a month, usually at, I mean, at the least busiest time, but like during homecoming, we, I mean, seemed like we had a, a meeting every week, and we meet Derek Homeroom.
Oh, okay, Derek Homeroom.
I mean, homeroom's from one fifteen to one forty-five every day.
Okay, thank you.
In the summer, we cram like two, three for the, for like, for like July to August for the school year to get everything planned out.
Nice.
And then during the week, obviously, we have a few.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I would just say thank you for presenting, and thank you to all the Student Council for all the service and volunteering you're doing to help make school more fun and enjoyable. We, we appreciate it, and it's making a difference for kids, so thank you.
Yeah, and like I said, our, we really enjoy being on the Student Council. It's very like engaging, and it's really nice to, um, just to participate with all the other kids, maybe kids that we wouldn't usually talk to and, yeah, just talk to.
And it's nice that our peers elected us and we represent them, so, yeah.
That's all we got. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, fellas. Appreciate it. Okay, our next report will be Mrs. Peets, our Director of Curriculum, coincides with Strategic Plan Initiative Three, Community Outreach and Communication.
Good evening. I have just a quick report this evening to tell you where we're at on the curriculum that we're adopting this year and, and what we're looking at. Um, the CTE curriculum is the study that's going on right now. That began in the summer. This summer I started reviewing highly qualified instructional materials in the areas, and there'll be quite a list that I'm giving you. I won't give them all to you, but auto tech, accounting, computer applications, welding, business networking, AV technology, human development, health, fundamental foods, fashion design, interior design, welding, auto tech, residential construction, agriculture, food and natural resources, fundamental animal science, fundamental plant science, companion animals, ag processing, fundamental horticulture, and there's probably ten or fifteen more that I've gotten in for samples. And so, uh, these samples, um, have been delivered, and the matrix that they all take a look at to review, um, have been delivered. And we're in the evaluation, evaluation process right now. Um, the matrix that they use is based on the areas of alignment to rigor and state standards, the key area of focus, instructional supports, and assessment. And then after this review is complete, the, the teams will be identifying any changes needed in priority and essential standards, and the scope and sequence for each course, and then creating proficiency scales for all the identified priority standards. So, um, just as for compliance to our policies, the materials and samples are available at the middle school and the high school. and the high school buildings for review through the next couple of months. Um, there are specific um community members who were requested for involvement that, but um, these are open to any parent or community, community members upon request um for evaluation by anyone who would wanna participate. Any questions?
Questions for Mrs. Peets? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will turn to Mr. Christopherson for his Business Manager's Report.
Okay, thank you. This evening, our first item's a general fund report. We're forty-two percent of the way through this year's budget at the end of November. We've collected ten million, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars or thirty-seven percent of budgeted revenue in the general fund. Compared to last year, at this time, we had ten million, six hundred and fifty-four thousand or thirty-eight percent. To date, the district has expended nine million, two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars or thirty-two percent of our budget expenditures. Compared to last year, at this time, we'd spent nine million, seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars or thirty-five percent of that budget. So we are continuing to watch our expenses wherever possible. On the construction end of things, the installation is nearly complete of the middle school roof. On paper, it is scheduled to be done this week, but we have more weather coming at us this week. So I don't know if it'll be completed this week or not, but they're trying to. And then they have all moved their for, focus over to the high school roof replacement. So we've tore into that already and the, the project is underway.
And questions for Mr. Christopherson? Alright, thank you, sir. Next, we will have uh Dr. Steinhoff with his Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, first is the superintendents from across the state met in Oacoma on December third to review the Governor's Budget Address. Uh, part of our work was we broke into six groups. Uh, and those groups consisted of schools all across the state. And we talked about talking points for the upcoming legislative session. And while that was going on, I decided uh and thought it'd be a good idea to volunteer to draft talking points based on the themes from all of these six groups. And what we'll do then is that talking point uh theme from across the state will be shared with all superintendents so that it can be used consistently with legislators as we prepare for the upcoming legislative session. So once we get that complete, I will share that uh with you at an upcoming school board meeting. I also have an attendance report. As per one of our board goals this year, I was planning to report on attendance. So I'm gonna give you attendance that is from the start of school on August twentieth through last Friday, the fifth. And I'll read through each school in no particular order. I'm gonna go in the order that it's here on the list. So Buchanan's K-one Center, their average, uh, the percentage of attendance from the beginning of school until last Friday has been ninety-three point seven-six percent. The high school is eighty-eight point two percent. The middle school is ninety-three point five-eight percent. Madison two-three Center is ninety-three point nine-seven percent. And Washington four-five Center is ninety-five point three-one percent. So what I'll do is I'll plan to bring you a quarterly update uh after third quarter and then uh the last one at the end of the school year. So I'll bring you two more uh in terms of reporting out on how we're doing in attendance. And as always, we strive to have attendance improve because we know when kids are present, they're statistically more successful. Um, just from being, being onsite. And the last thing I have is we are a little, a little over two weeks away from the holiday break. I wish you all happy holidays and good tidings as you celebrate the season with family and friends. So that concludes my report. Back to you, Chairman Van Berkom.
Thank you, Dr. Steinhoff. Any questions for Superintendent? Alright, thank you, sir. Okay, we'll move into old business now. Our first item of old business is a second reading and approval of Policy GCA twenty-three, Instructional Coach. There's been no changes to this since our first reading, so I would entertain a motion to approve. So moved.
Sorry.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or comments? Okay, seeing none. Kelly, will you call roll, please?
Cardona.
Aye.
Simmonsma.
Aye.
Bishop.
Aye.
And Van Berkom.
Aye.
Is unanimous?
Okay, motion carries. Uh, next item is Policy GCA twenty-four, the Literacy Coach. This is also up for a second reading and approval. Uh, there's been no changes to this one since our first reading, so I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or comments? Okay, seeing none. Kelly, will you call roll, please?
Cardona.
Aye.
Simmonsma.
Aye.
Bishop.
Aye.
Van Berkom.
Aye.
Passed unanimously.
Okay, motion carries. Policy GCA twenty-four is approved. Next item of old business is our twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven calendar. This is up for our first reading. Coincides with Strategic Plan Initiative One, Student Achievement. You should have the uh draft calendar in your board packet. The calendar committee had met and put together the calendar. Guess I'm gonna comment first. Uh, most of what, what I see is, is fine with me. But as a military veteran myself, I don't like seeing the, going to school on Veterans Day. I'd like to see that go back to a, a day off and shift at, put another day somewhere else in the calendar. Uh, but I'd open it up to other board member comments after you've had a chance to look at it. Anybody else have any concerns or comments?
Yeah, I'm with Tim. Uh, seems like it's been a long practice that we don't have school on Veterans Day. And I'm okay leaving it that way, especially um knowing that veterans would rather us not do so, so. Um, but yeah, other than that, the calendar, I think, looks good. We picked the, we picked the first day and all the other days are filled in.
Filled in very nicely.
Pretty much, yeah, fills in good.
Dr. Steinhoff?
Yes, I, I can talk a little bit. Um, when we, we met on the eighteenth and we went through the calendar and we voted on a number of different changes, I just, just wanna highlight how we got to the, the Veterans Day piece. It actually, it was near the end of the meeting and a, a person that was in the committee complimented us on taking the day off uh because of s- uh supporting veterans. And then that discussion uh opened the door for talking about how it impacts kids, the elementary kids in terms of how it'd be during the middle of the week and then starting, starting anew on the next day. And then we talked through how Veterans Day is built into multiple negotiations uh in terms of a day off. And there's differences between twelve-month employees versus uh ten-month employees. And I told the group that I'm not going to tell them that we can't do it. I said it's possible that we could do it, but it would take negotiations, but it's, I'm not gonna just uh not do it because the group wa- was interested in doing it. But they're aware that it's possible that wasn't going to happen. Uh, and then I would also highlight that in February and March and April, there are in each month, a Friday and a Monday off, which is providing, you know, four-day weekends in each of the three months. And that's something that's been talked about the last couple of years in the ca- calendar committee of wanting to try to have the dates of tu- of days off tied on a Friday and a Monday to allow families, if they so choose to do vacations, that there's some, some time that's got a, a larger chunk at one point. And uh, in terms of adding another day, uh, it's up to you on when you add it. But the first day of school is the nineteenth and as of now, uh, the last day of school is Tuesday, May eighteenth. So there's time there. If you wanted to add on to the nineteenth, you could, or if there's another place you wanted to add on, uh, you could as well.
Guess I'd be fine with going Veterans Day back, back to a day off and just throw the May nineteenth on then. Otherwise, your ca- calendar committee did a great job.
Thank you.
President Van Berkom, I would like to also address our early releases. Generally, we only take eight for professional development. And on this calendar, we have nine of them in the month of April, when we have a lot of testing going on. For whatever reason, we have a calendar that has four, four-day weeks. And I'd like to remove the early release from the month of April so that we have one solid week in the month of April where we have a solid week for testing. And so remove one of our early releases.
April fourteenth is what you're asking?
Yes, to just take that one off the calendar so we would have one solid week for good testing during the month of April. Because generally, we only have eight early releases and during this calendar, we have nine.
Guess I'd be okay with that. Any other board member concerns? Got a thumbs up from Garrett. Levi's nodding his head and Ray's making notes and.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with it, yeah.
Okay. Sounds like that'd be just fine, Linda.
Thank you.
Guess a, a thought and a comment on the, the Veterans Day. Um, thi- this previous Veterans Day, and I don't remember who it was, but somebody commented to me about another school that had some um, a, a program on Vet- Veterans Day. Um, they had school and they had a program and, and thi- this person had gone to it and talked about how, how wonderful it was. And, and kinda made a comment, you know, here on doesn't even have, you know. So I'm just wondering, is there another way to, to honor veterans and honor Veterans Day while being in school? That would maybe include some of those veterans or is not having school that day a, a better alternative? I, I'm not a veteran, so I'm asking. I, um.
I mean, I would just prefer to keep it as a holiday. They do have Veterans Day programs around the community already. Like to think it well attended. Okay. What else has any comments or concerns?
The only concern I have is what does that do for childcare, you know, for everybody else? And veterans alike, there's some veterans that do their jobs, give Veterans Day off. So, I don't know if that's present in anybody's equation.
We took it off this year. We have, we have in the past, there, we, I think we went to school one year and we got a lot of public blowback at that time, too. Ten years ago or so. Anything else on the calendar? Any other comments or questions or concerns? You have what you need, Dr. Steinhoff?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Cause it'll be on our next agenda for second reading and final approval then. Okay, if there's nothing else, then we will move into new business. We have one item of new business. JLG Proposal for Plans for High School Kitchen Exhaust Hood and Equipment in the Amount of nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. I would entertain a motion to approve the proposal.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Kelly, do you have any comments on that?
Sure, this is a continuation of the high school remodeling projects that we started this past summer. And then when uh we got into it, it was a lot more complex than originally anticipated. We had originally thought we could replace the exhaust hood in the high school kitchen and purchase the new equipment that would go under the exhaust hood. Well, with the addition of the new fax room and the big exhaust hood in the new fax room, adding another new exhaust hood in the high school kitchen would have exhausted too much air and give the building negative pressure, which means the doors would have been sucking shut. So when you have that situation, it requires a makeup air unit. Um, the addition of the makeup air unit to the roof of the high school is simply too much weight with the current roof structure. Um, so the project last summer got derailed at that point. And the architects and engineers are going back to the drawing board with this um proposal to try and come up with some building plans, which will either modify the existing high school roof to hold all of this equipment or look at other options like a, a, a structure next to the high school to hold some of this equipment um so that it doesn't have to go on the existing roof. So either way, it's to accomplish the high school kitchen remodel.
When do they look to start this? Or is it ongoing already?
They would start drawing, they've done a lot of this work already. This is, they would develop plans based on this proposal um with a cost estimate so we know whether we can move ahead with the funds that we have and try and get this done this summer.
Okay, this summer. Okay, thank you. Questions, comments? Okay, seeing no further discussion. Kelly, will you call roll and we'll vote?
Carrie.
Aye.
Cardona.
Aye.
Simmonsma.
Aye.
Bishop.
Aye.
Van Berkom.
Aye.
Passed unanimously.
Okay, motion carries. That completes our new business. We have one item for executive session in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law one dash twenty-five dash two subsection one, uh, employee qualifications. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for that.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Uh, Kelly, will you call roll?
Carrie.
Aye.
Cardona.
Aye.
Simmonsma.
Aye.
Bishop.
Aye.
And Van Berkom.
Aye.
So it passed unanimously.
Okay, we'll take a short recess and we'll reconvene in Dr. Steinhoff's office in executive session. And I would announce that there will be no further action taken tonight except adjournment. So thank you, everyone.